Athlete of nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda and place it on file?
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you. Cole, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Madam President?
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Alright, so first up tonight, we have a presentation on CTE. There she is, with Mrs. Lansina.
Thank you. Good evening. February is Career Technical Education Month, in case you haven't guessed. And I wanted to let you know, we have a new state director in CTE. Her name is Selena Mills. And she had a really good quote the other day, and she said, "Career technical education provides opportunities for students to explore careers, gain academic and technical skills, and find a path to a career about which they are passionate." And that is what we do every day. We are so blessed in Bedford. We have fourteen state-approved programs. And this, this school year, I, I wanted to talk about some other things that you may not know about. We have students that leave our building and they go to cosmetology in Monroe. I have students that leave and go to agriculture in Whiteford. I have a student that's pursuing public safety and she goes to the Monroe ISD. And I have four students that leave early from school and they go right to work. And we do that through our co-op program. And typically, on these types of nights, I give you lots of statistics, like, seven hundred and fifty-four students sit in career technical education classes at Bedford. Five hundred and twenty are males, two hundred and thirty-four are females. We have two hundred and sixteen students taking at least one family consumer science class, which is amazing. We have a hundred and twelve students enrolled in our construction program. And I wanted to give you a little update from last year. We tested our kids through, did their ASE certification testing in our automotive program. They scored more certifications than ever before, and they guaranteed they would beat that record this year. So that's amazing. I could go on and on. I could talk about Business Professionals of America. We have fifteen students from BPA, and they will be going to states to represent us in Grand Rapids. After that, they'll be going on to Orlando, hopefully. So that's wonderful news. But I wanted you to hear more tonight from the students, the reason we do what we do. So I'm gonna invite Mr. Rapogel up. He's gonna introduce his students. They have a video for you, and they have a very, very special gift.
Well, I'll say it like I say it every day, even in the evening. Good morning. Okay, the first one I'm gonna call up is Caitlin. And she is actually my second-year student, and she's doing an amazing job. When I first got her, she was afraid of the machines. She was afraid she would get hurt. And I talked to her dad for, what, hours? And I convinced her to stay in the program, and she has done nothing but knocked it out of the park. So, I'm very proud of her. Next, I have Ryan. He is a second-year student. And this guy is unbelievable picking up Master Cam. He's already got the ten drawn that are required for like a two-year program in his first year on Master Cam. So, congratulations. Then I have my last guy here. Come on up. Brandon Fisher, you might have seen him or heard of him around the school, because he's heavily involved in robotics. This guy, first year, can run any machine I have, including the Haas's. He's amazing. He picks things up, he grabs it like, like it's just second nature. He's unbelievable. He does work in a tool shop right now, in your community, so that's really good for us, because we get a lot of recognition from it. And I'm gonna turn it over to them guys, because this is what it's all about.
So, we decided we wanted to make something to show CTE for all the board members. So, with our Haas CNC program, we can pretty much draw and design anything that our minds could think of. So, we designed a circular keychain that has indents of CTE in it. Everything with the contours, the tool paths, and all of that was written from Ryan.
So, we used SolidWorks to design this. We just thought of an idea and catted it up and then moved it on to Master Cam. That's where we made all the tool paths. Had like thirteen tool paths, used five different tools. And there's a video taken off the backsides of the keychain.
So, everything with the Haas is computer-programmed. So whatever you program it to do, and whatever passes that you program, is what it's going to do. That's the hole and dot ideal and job of it. So with that program, we designed the backside. For the keychains were made out of square aluminum. And then for our first tool program, we made the circular, and then made the designs of the CTE with a smaller tooling. And then we'll flip it around in the machine, and then write another program that takes off the rest of the square, revealing just the circle.
And as we were finishing up, this was on a separate machine known as a laser etcher. These are finished off with names, and a year we added to the keychains. Here's our process of the laser etcher adding all of your names. You all have separate keychains today. This is ran off of a program, off of a laser etching that is connected to the computer. The screen of the program is next to this video. This is just the finishing, and after this is done, the keychains are completed after it's came out of the Haas.
What they didn't tell you is that Mrs. Lansina had this crazy idea that we need a personalized gift for the school board. And I gave them how much time to do it?
About twelve days.
Exactly. And Mr. Rapogel's speech to them was, "Can you do it?" And they said, "Yes, we can." And he said, "It's a hard time constraint. You have no design. What are you doing?" And they got to work. And then they just kept coming to me, "What are you thinking of this?" And they tweaked some things, and I had no doubt that it would be finished. So I would pass these out.
And with our twelve days that we had to machine them, three of the days, school got canceled, so it cut down our time. Very, very significantly short.
Alright, no more cancellations, I guess.
I waited more.
These are beautiful, guys. Absolute, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They did an amazing job. So now I would like to invite up, Brandon, you stay up there. Brandon, you're just gonna get that. You come on up. So as the board knows, we are so appreciative of all your help with the house build. It is going amazing. And instead of me talking about it, two of the students who work on it every day, they're gonna give you an update.
Yes, thank you guys for having us here. I'm Zach Weir, and this is my first year of construction. I've had some background in algeon before. I truly enjoy it. And I can't thank you guys enough for the opportunity to allow us to pursue and help all the kids in Bedford, not only construction, but allow us to learn these other options to do after high school. And to start off the building project, we had to go down to just flat ground. We had to go, we had to figure out our surveying and how our land was. So with that, we had two surveyors come out, and they showed us everything to do with surveying, everything, how they find where our actual lot was. And...
So, we had two guys come out, two representatives of surveying. They walked us around our whole property. We actually walked about a half-mile down the road, and we were able to find a milestone, is one of the biggest things they look for, to show everybody's lots in the area of land that they own, so to try to find our area. Because when we first got to the job site, it was just a flat piece of ground with some trees. So you definitely want to always make sure, where's your property lines at? Where does actually, does the state own? We found out with our house and our property that we have, that to the right, there's actually thirty feet that was supposed to be an unmanned road. So, that was an area that we had to adjust our blueprints of our house, of where it goes. We had to adjust six feet to the left, because with regulations that they explained to us, you cannot be too close to that unmanned road, even though the road is not there. And I thought it was cool that the two guys, they walked us around, they showed us the tools, what they use every day, some of the lasers, the leveling tools, and just different tools that they use every day on the job to survey people's houses everywhere.
Yeah, and then, so at that point, we had our land plot out. We knew what we could do. From that point, we got our permit, and this allowed us to officially break ground. And we had a guy named Bob come out with his excavator. He taught us everything when it came to excavating, how he excavates everything. And it took him about a day and a half to get that excavated, and from that point, we were ready. We could go down into the hole. And we were able to put in a material called formodrin. It's a little bit different of approach from the normal forms that you put up for concrete footings. And with this, it allows you to be able to actually leave that footing, or the form for the footing, in with the concrete, and it's another way to drain the water, so your basement doesn't flood. And after we put that in, we were able to throw, we threw gravel down for the whole basement floor. And after that, we're gonna put concrete over it, but as of right now, it's just gravel down there. And we put two drums down there to absorb more water, so we won't have any problems such as flooding or eroding of the foundation.
And then, so after our former drains were laid, we were able to start pouring the foundation and the footings. My class, the sixth and seventh hour, was a part of when they actually were pouring. Our crew, we helped them wherever they were needed, helped to lay the concrete down, leveled everything out, just to try to make the process faster, because if anyone's ever worked with concrete, it hardens quickly. So you gotta make sure everything's level, you got enough concrete in areas that you need, and just to make sure everything's level. So our crew made the job of theirs easier, and we learned a lot about the tools and leveling, and scraping off the top finish of concrete, just to make sure the footing was poured right.
Alright, and then after we had the walls poured, we pulled off all the forms, and this left us with just the cement walls. And from there, we were able to put in the joists across the floor. And this is where we were able to then lay down the OSB, so we had a flat area to work on, and then begin to put up the walls. And from this point, our teacher, Mr. Vogel, he taught us all we had to know when it came to building the walls and making sure they're square, and making sure the structure would actually hold together. And great experience to figure out how much more there is to building a wall, and how much more you don't see unless you actually do it hands-on.
And especially with building the wall, all the tools that come with it. Mr. Vogel teaches us through all the process of learning all the nail guns, all the measurements on tape measures, everything a speed square can do. And then even to the lines of the degrees of a chop saw, and just lets everybody get into the experience of using all the tools, the nail guns, and let everybody build their own wall on themselves. And with me, I've been, I'm a third year in construction classes, started out my freshman year. So, he likes us to have different groups and different leaderships at the job site, so more things get accomplished. So we usually have a group of third years, and then that will go with a group of first years, just so everyone can get hands-on and involved. And so he does not have to be in many different areas at one time, because of the third years. So I think that's something special to me, is that there's different leadership groups and different levels that allows for everybody to help the house project get done.
Yeah, and one thing I do really appreciate on how Mr. Vogel teaches and everything, he makes sure that everyone knows how to use just the basic nails and hammers. Before we go into the nail guns, go into everything, it really allows the student to appreciate how well and efficient you can work with a nail gun, but also still knowing the basic necessity to doing any home renovations or anything, if you don't have all the tools to do it. And from that point, once we raised all of our walls, we were ready to then bring in the trusses. And with that, we had the opportunity, we went out to a truss factory. They showed us how they build the trusses, and how everything comes together, and that just opened up more job opportunities for careers for people that don't necessarily know exactly what they want to go into. It's just another opportunity that everyone got to see. And from that point, we were able to raise all the trusses up onto the roof, toenail them all in, and learn how to brace them off, and get more comfortable where you're working from a little bit more of an elevation. And kids had the opportunity to do something that most high school kids don't get to do.
Yeah, I agree. Basing off what Zach was saying, too, climbing nine, eight feet up in the air onto trusses isn't something you do on your everyday thing. So, Mr. Vogel makes sure everybody gets the experience if they're comfortable with it. Going up in the trusses, adding the bracing. And what we're starting on, working on now, is the sheeting of the trusses. So we're laying down five-eighths OSB, and we actually have both sides already sheeting. We're, we're ready to move on to the gable ends, and almost finished the whole roof, ready for shingles. So, Mr. Vogel brings in a big thing of everybody starting off, like Zach was saying, with hammer and nail. So we started first working with hammer, nail, nailing in all the sheeting, which gets you comfortable being bent over on the roof and climbing up in the heights that not everybody does on a daily.
Yes, and I'm very excited to see where this project continues to take us. And it's an opportunity definitely where me, over the summer, I plan on pursuing, building some houses. Again, a feel, see if I truly enjoy that field. So far, I've really enjoyed it, but without this class, I don't know if I would have ever even went and approached to go to build there and ask if I could help build with them.
Like Zach was saying, I, my freshman year, I went into like construction fundamentals, which brought me into learning a little bit of everything. Going from just wiring a plug, to building drywall, to help building a shed for Mr. Phillips. And then it really pursued me to want to go into construction one, which last year, we built the house that was on School Road. And I was able to see that process from start to finish, from my sophomore and junior year, from it going from a flat piece of property to us finish painting the house and putting it for the open house. It's been definitely been a part of my high school career, of going through all the CTE programs and seeing what I really want to do after high school.
Alright. Once again, I just would like to thank all of you guys for all the support you have for not only the construction trades, but the CTE program as a whole. And thank you guys.
Yes, thank you.
I am one proud mama right now. I just, I, I will always bring kids, because I love this. They speak so more, so much more eloquently than I can. And it just, I know Mr. Rapogel feels the same. They are why we do what we do. I wanted to share some news, because I'm not sure the boys know this. In CTE world, there's a thing called a CTE showcase. It's in Lansing every, it's in Lansing every year. Since I started my career, even at a different district, I've applied every year for a program that I thought was just wonderful, and I've never been chosen until this year. And this year, Bedford Construction and Monroe Construction will have a dual presentation at the CTE showcase, and they will talk to legislators, just like these guys did tonight, about how important CTE is, how important the funding is, how important that we keep all of this going forward. So they will be doing that on April 29th. They will go into Lansing to represent us. I wanted to say thank you so much to all of you in this room, the community, the board, the administration. We could never do what we do without your support. You've never given me a hurdle. You've always helped me. The stuff that Carl has done on the house build to help Kevin, I can't thank him enough for that. And I just want to let you know that we appreciate you so much. We do not take your support for granted, and I don't think the kids do either. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I am a little bit at a loss for words. That was a great presentation, and it, it is why we're all here. Not only your teachers, but it's, you are all why we're all up here. So, well done, and we're very proud of the work you're doing, and very proud you'll be representing us. If you, if your speech is half as good in Lansing as it was here, you're gonna do great. So, thank you very much. Does any, I'll open it up. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Because they, you may not all want to stay for the full meeting, which is okay if you want to leave.
No, I just, just that I know Kevin Vogel can't be here tonight because of wrestling districts, but if he were here, he would be equally as proud as Ms. Lansina is. He glows every time he talks about his projects, his students. It was the number today, a hundred and twelve students in that class. I don't know what it was when I came here eight years ago, but nowhere near that number. We dreamed about building homes at that time, and through the board's action, and Kevin and Ms. Lansina's hard work to go out and get donations from the community, which still continue to come in. We're one of the, I think, two programs in this area that are, that are going back to doing this again. And finding lots, selling homes are on the back end are fun for me. I, I get to shop with the district's money and, and do something to get a check at the end, but all the work that you guys are doing. Every time I, every time I get on the road, I drive by there, just to, just to see what's new. So, congratulations, and thank you so much for this outstanding keychain. I, I love watching those machines work and the, and the program that goes into them. So these are great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I would like to say, as an industrial electrician, I, this would be my passion, is the CTE program. I would ask you, young men, you talked about a sixth and seventh hour. You have multiple two-hour groups working on this?
Yeah.
How, how do you communicate between each other?
So we have a lot of group chats, group chats that all show communication of what's being done that day at the job site. Mr. Vogel lets all of us know in the morning. It's cold out, guys, bring a jacket. We're gonna be at the job site. We're gonna be on the group shooting. He lets us know the plan and the action that we can step forward to at the day.
Well, well done. You, as, as Griffin's gonna say, the heat's in the tools. If it's cold outside, it can get a little bit harder. So that's all I got. Thanks. Well done.
Griffin?
Yeah. I'm a product of Bedford CTE. I took all the classes, too. It's one of, it's one of the big things of, that's made me who I am today, and allowed me to have a, a great career in the trades myself. It's not all glory, as you guys know. You work in the cold, you work in the heat. I've been there. I was there today. You work in the ice. But you guys do an amazing job, all of you. You all should be proud, you all should be proud of all the work that you guys do. Your teachers are amazing. We appreciate everything that all of you guys do. And you really make the community proud. So thank you, guys.
Okay, let's move on to our first public commentary. This is for agenda items only. If there's anyone who would like to take the podium? Seeing none, we will move on to board correspondence. Griffin?
I'll have to report.
Okay. Moving right along, Board of Ed reports. Liaison to Bedford Township Government, Amy?
I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Uh, we're moving right through. Griffin, Park Board?
Nothing to report.
It's winter, nothing to report. Megan is not here to talk about Association of School Boards. I'll just say that there's some training this weekend. I'm taking a couple of classes virtually on Saturday. I think that Todd, you're taking Board Number 101 tomorrow. Are you doing that, too, Cole? So, very good. Carl, did you have something? You look like you're about to speak.
I'm on the policy.
Oh, you're just on policy, yeah. So, go ahead.
Policy Committee, we were waiting till we had the new board seated. We've recently had, we've had some court decisions come down that will affect our policies. We knew that was going to take effect sometime, in the, in recent times, so we will set up, we will set up a meeting here in the next month or so. Kind of let the dust settle, and then we'll reassess what needs to be updated and what does not.
Okay, thank you. Monroe County Association of Board of Education, it's me, and I have nothing to report either. I think we have, Sophia is here. Sophia Johnson is our student representative, so we'll look.
Hello. Last week, we had our Winter Fest competition with the juniors winning. This led up to our winter dance, which had a greater attendance than last year. We also recently finished our second blood drive last Thursday with a combined total of forty-nine pints of blood, with the next blood drive beginning in April. Currently, we are going to begin working on Valentine's Day cards to hand out to residents at Hickory Ridge next Wednesday. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Alright, items from the superintendent. Carl, looks like you have a couple?
Do. Good evening. My first item this evening is for a consideration to approve the fire system upgrade at Monroe Road Elementary. You have the quote for a total of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and seventy. The reason that Monroe Road needs to be updated is that when the bond was completed, we updated all the systems throughout the district, except Monroe, as I, the shiny new building, which was only twenty years old at the time. And our other four, uh, systems across the district were significantly older than that. So, the new system, we would like to, as we incorporate that into the security programs that we have, it will not run on the current system at Monroe Road. And so we had the company that we utilize for APC, utilize, we use them for our smoke detecting, fire alarm systems. And we need, we had them come out. They did a full assessment. We are going to add the voice modulators, like we do in all the other buildings, so that when there's an alarm, it will tell us. If there's a panic button pushed, and the doors are locked down immediately, it will, it will immediately go through with the message. And then it will also contact the first responders directly, like our other systems do. So, we want to get this done sooner than later. We did work with our attorneys. Because this is a sole system that only APC can control, we didn't have to go out for bid for this. So we have a letter from our attorney stating that they approve, and this is, this is allowable. So, I would ask this evening that you consider approval for the ninety-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars for APC, so that we can upgrade the Monroe fire system.
Is there a motion to approve the fire system upgrade for Monroe Road Elementary?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fire system upgrade for Monroe Road Elementary as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Griffin, this is a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan is excused. Griffin?
Yes.
Lisa is excused. The chair votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. My second item this evening is a consideration to select the MASB, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards. We have to select, or we are asked to select one member delegate to represent our region, which is Region Seven. We were, we received a packet with some, with three different individuals in it. Last, last election, we selected and recommended a gentleman, Mr. Guillermo Lopez, out of Lansing School District. Mr. Lopez has twenty-four years on the board. Multiple, it looks like four different certifications that he obtained through MASB. And with the other two, both are highly qualified, but I, I don't, I think Mr. Lopez did a fine job representing our district and our region. So I, I personally would recommend that we continue with Mr. Lopez's appointment.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Madam President?
Cole?
I move that the Board of Education select Guillermo Lopez as the candidate for the MASB Board of Directors for the 2025 election as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Todd, is there any discussion? Which I think I forgot on the last one, so I hope you all were, didn't have anything to say? So seeing no discussion, this is a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan is excused. Griffin?
Yes.
Lisa is excused. The chair votes yes. And then the motion carries.
Thank you. My last item for the evening is a resolution that we worked on as a region. Actually, it's most of southeastern Michigan. And I believe this is taking place across the country with groups of superintendents and districts and states working together. This will be the fiftieth anniversary for the introduction of the IDEA funding and program through the federal government. This is to support special education services across the nation. When this was developed, it, the Congress made a pledge to support IDEA funding at the federal level at forty percent. And it's currently funded at ten percent. It's never been over fifteen percent. So, we would like them to do what they put in law. So we have worked with our local, our local federal rep, Mr. Wahlberg, and luckily, Mr. Wahlberg now is the chairman of the And luckily, Mr. Wahlberg now is the chairman of the Education Committee in, in the House. So he is in a powerful position to help us if he chooses. I know that the K-12 Alliance, which I am on the executive board for, is in Lansing this week with a number of boards and board members and superintendents from across the country. They are lobbying hard to get a hearing on the floor, just to bring this to light. And I don't think as many people are aware of it as they should be. We, as a district, are funded significantly under by the state and with our federal money we receive, at eighteen dollars through the county does not cover our costs. Chrissy, I think we've talked, are we at about sixty percent funding right now? So for every special ed resource that we purchase, which we are obligated to do, we are happy to do for our students, we receive about sixty percent funding. When, between the state and the federal government, it should be at a hundred percent. So if this were funded then, at forty percent, we'd be awfully close. So we're going to continue pushing. And this resolution tonight was created by a K-12 director. And we were asking every district in the, in the southeastern Michigan corridor and for us to sign it. And they, they shared it across the state. So I'd like to supply ours and support it as a, as a board and keep pushing for the funding that was promised.
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution calling for full, permanent funding of IDEA as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, instructional items for presentation. Dr. French?
Thank you very much. I have a couple, we have a couple for you tonight. I am going to talk to you about our Trends Survey. And you have this set of slides shared with you. So you have all the information ready to go. But just a little introduction, the Trends Survey is a nationally recognized survey that was produced by an organization called Safe and Civil Schools. And it was, you actually have a link to the questions. If you want to see the full list of questions, that's linked in your presentation. But it's a nationally recognized survey developed by Safe and Civil Schools. The junior high school was the first school to administer it. They were seeing a need there to get a handle on feedback from staff, students, and parents on, on these questions. So they did that in the spring of 2023. And out of that, they had a focus on their restrooms and hallways, as you might imagine, in a junior high school. And as a result of that, that they redid the supervision in those areas. They did a good job of teaching the expectations to the students. And they are already seeing an impact in those areas. There's definitely a reduction in the referrals to the office or major concerns in those areas at the junior high. So that's, that's what the survey is intended to do. So the intention is to get on a, a data loop with all the buildings. And so that's what has started already. The junior high will actually compete, complete their data loop. As a follow-up, they're going to survey their current eighth graders, who were sixth graders when they first took it. So they'll see a comparison with that class. The other schools, just, I asked the, all the principals to share a summary of their data and what rose to the top for action when they gave the survey last spring. As a total, the total that you're seeing tonight of the four schools, eight hundred and seventeen students, a hundred and four staff, and two hundred and eighty-eight parents are represented, total between the four buildings. Douglas Road, you can see the responses there. And then here's Douglas Road, positive points. So this means, when we say positive points, that means a vast supermajority of these populations were saying this was a, this was a great thing at this school. So you can see, school is a safe place for students and staff. Students can identify where to get help. If we can go back one slide there. Yeah, there you go. Help, they, they know where they can get help for themselves or others if someone's being bullied. Students are respectful and they're proud to be part of the school. They identified these areas for action. So they saw some room for growth in their cafeteria routines and procedures, their dismissal, and restroom expectations. So they decided to address all those through their PBIS process. And for the audience, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. So they have a comprehensive plan for the building by teaching expectations in all of those areas to the students and then being clear and consistent about consequences and rewards, I might add. And then additional staff and supervision to address those areas. Jack Monroe, you can see the number of responses there. And then their positive points. Students are taught well, the rules and expectations. Students are proud to be part of the JRE community. This was a, this was a nice proud point for JRE. Teachers give students enough information to be successful. That's a great one. And then again, if, if students saw someone being bullied, they know what to do about that. JRE targeted these three areas. How often parents and students are checking Schoology. Schoology, Schoology is a big repository of information for students and parents. So they want, want people to be more clued in, attuned to that. So they set those three points for their action pan, action plan for that. Students treat each other respectfully in the bus area. Again, they've done some very targeted things there. And then they wanted to see an increase in their parent and family PTO volunteers. So they targeted some specific things. MRE? I'm going to ask MRE what they did for their parent survey. That's a really nice sample of parents. It's hard to get parents to respond to surveys sometimes. So we need to, our PLC needs to check in with them and see what they did. But their positive points, again, students feel safe in the school. Staff members show that support and respect and kindness, and parents feel welcome at MRE. The two points they considered priority were safety in the restrooms and respect in the cafeteria. And then a consistent approach to behavior management. So they had some specific things that they did. Reviewing and teaching expectations, bringing back the fifth grade volunteer safety program. I really like that one because it's, it's giving the fifth graders a role in helping with these, these points in the building. And then working in their PLCs to review behavior consequences. The high school, nice robust number of student responses there. Especially good there. And then their positive points. They had big supermajorities of students that feel safe in those common areas of the building. And then the vast majority of students view staff as supportive and respectful and encouraging. Generally, students are proud to be part of the school. And the vast majority of students report knowing what to do if they're bullied. So then they've wanted to focus on the bathrooms. That was a big, big area of concern across the surveys. So they had a real comprehensive action plan for this. Mr. Weber did some student focus groups, kind of figure out, what does that mean? What do we mean when we feel like we're not safe there? They did a staff presentation. They did, increased the supervision of staff and the way they supervise. They met with the students at the beginning of the year to review the rules. They increased the consequences for bad behavior in the bathrooms. So a little description of that there and, and specific behaviors they're targeting. And then Mr. Weber has done some additional work. Hearing from colleagues, getting feedback from them, what's been working in other high schools. And also redistribution of staff. And report is, I did get a brief update. Of course, the Trends, the Trends data, we'll keep up with this. But the, the informal or anecdotal right now is that his discussions with students indicate that they noticed the increase in adult supervision and feel safer. So they're already seeing a difference from what they've done. But this is one component of, of having these targeting areas in your building for improvement. Getting this feedback, you see where the data lines up. And you have, again, the positive points and points that you want to target. And we, we see this as an ongoing process. So any questions about what you saw or yes?
Maybe I missed, maybe you mentioned it, but why didn't, do we do the junior high?
I, I had summarized their data before. They actually went first. They went a year before the other schools.
They do every other year.
Oh, they were last year?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Late to the party.
So they're going to complete their data loop this year. They're going to survey their current eighth graders. So we'll have an update on that when they get that data back. And then going forward, I think we'll have all five schools on the same data loop. So we'll get them all, all coordinated, doing it at the same time.
I do have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Are the Trends surveys sent to all staff? Because I see that DRE had forty-one staff members respond. And then some of the other schools, twenty-nine, sixteen.
I think I will clarify that. They, uh, DRE might have surveyed, that's more, more staff than just their classroom teachers. So they might have just given it to more staff.
Well, right. And then senior high schools, only eighteen, but you got two different grade levels there.
Right.
Ninth and eleventh. And I know there's more than eighteen staff members that deal with freshmen and, you know.
Right.
So I was wondering if they, if all the staff got it, or how did that work?
I will, I will find out more about that for you. Yeah.
I, I believe they, they gave it to the staff that primarily teach those grade levels. So individuals that have, you know, that might teach history nine or ten, gave it directly to those teachers.
So it would be a cross-section of the staff, not all.
Because we have teachers that do teach primarily senior classes or junior classes, depending what their specialty is. The only thing I know that others want to speak, but the only thing I'll say is, when you do, when you perform activities like this, we can use this data to justify positions like Jeff Polly's new role at the high school, which I understand is making a difference from what I've spoken with students and staff. And knowing that it's working at the high school, we should be able to add a position similar to that at the junior high next year. Somebody who is, I don't know, will find somebody identical to Mr. Polly's skillset. But not a lot of retired undersheriffs out there. But there are individuals that are, that I think would be very good at this role that might be interested. So, but in order to, to get those approved by the state, you have to show a need. And when you have the data in front of you, you can, you can share that and justify it, as well as with yourselves. So you know that why we, why would we need that. So thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I think specifically Mr. Polly's presence would, would play into that update we got from the high school, for sure.
Thank you. And you have another presentation for us?
Yeah, it's my pleasure. Just to, just to review with you. We have the wonderful privilege of having reading specialists in each of our elementary buildings. Julie Eden has gone on to a position at the junior high school, supervising intervention there. And we're just so excited about her work there as well. But this team proposed and was selected to present at the Nineteenth Annual MTSS Conference. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Another term you might have heard before is RTI, or Response to Intervention. They're kind of interchangeable terms. But I had the privilege of being there with them as they presented. They did a wonderful job. It was a very well-received presentation and quite an honor to be selected for a state conference. And they're going to talk to you about From Balance to Science and our journey here in Bedford of implementing science of reading-based principles. So welcome. And to introduce them to you, Angela Pickett is the reading specialist at Douglas Road Elementary. Julie Eden, formerly the reading specialist at Jack Monroe Elementary, now at the junior high. And then Kelly Kohlhafer is our reading specialist at Monroe Road Elementary. So welcome, ladies.
So as Mark said, we were selected to actually present at the MTSS Conference. And unfortunately, I was unable to go. They went. My husband ended up with surgery, so I was unable to attend. But it's been a long journey for us. So the presentation we're going to show you is actually a ninety-minute presentation that we have narrowed down to skin and bones as much as we can to not use all your time tonight. As we started, and, or Anita Brandman is also a reading specialist at Jack Monroe right now. She was unable to attend tonight. Each of us takes a caseload of students. And we also have SIPs that we manage underneath us. We train the teachers, we train the SIPs, which are student intervention providers, on how to work with students who are struggling readers. And that's part of our role that we do. So as Mark introduced us, Angela, Julie, Anita, and myself. Oh, sorry. So this shift has taken a long time. We started out by looking at things like why we are having gaps in our literacy. The programs we were using were programs that we were told were the best of the best. And now that research has come, we found out there are some new things that we need to be looking at. We weren't hitting the gaps that we needed to hit. So we also thought about how we need to improve and utilize research-based instruction. So research-based instruction, a lot of it is systematic and it is explicit. So it will repeat itself and it is, you are teaching the student explicitly the rules there. There's no guessing. We used to have something was called, it was called the three-quing system. You guys may remember this. What's the first letter of the word? What's the last letter of the word? Look at the picture. What word makes sense there? We have found that that actually makes poor readers. It does not make good readers. So we had to make the shift in our district so that we can do right by our, by our students. We found that what we were doing, it wasn't working. So we started out.
So at this point, we had to go ahead and start building our foundational knowledge. We knew that there were gaps that were happening within the students that we were working with. And in this multi-tiered system of support, we start by looking at all the students in the school. And we're looking for those that are not performing at the standard that we want them to be at. And those are the students that we're working with on a daily basis. And so we started to look into different programs. We started listening to podcasts, all sorts of things. You can see some of them listed up here. And Angela had just joined us as a reading specialist at that point at Douglas Road. And she had come with this wonderful program called Letters. Kelly and I, and at that point Carol Davies had just left us. And we had not heard of Letters before. And she said, you've really got to check this out. They're really introducing to us more of the structured literacy, and we need to look into this. And LETTERS stands for the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And that's why it's spelled incorrectly, because it's actually a moniker. And so this program was a two-year program that was presented through Lexia. And the state of Michigan is doing a fantastic job of providing grants so that we didn't have to actually pay for that. We didn't have to come to the district and ask you to pay for it either, because the, the state is paying for that. And they're still providing grants for that at this time. We were getting into different podcasts, like Sold a Story. You might have heard this one, because this is hitting home with a lot of parents right now. Teachers are listening to this, and it's actually creating a lot of unrest in teachers and in parents. Because the way that we were taught, the way that our children have been taught as teachers, we were taught to teach kids this way, we're finding out, as Kelly said, it's not right. And so you look back at your career and you say, how long did I do this? How long did I use that three-quing with kids? And it's not right. How long did the company Heinemann sell us the product of LLI? One that we came to the board and said, will you please use your money to purchase this program? It's the best of the best right now. And now we're finding that that's not right. We were sold a story. We were sold this product. We were told that this is the best, and it was not. And LLI is produced by Fantas and Pennell. They were, were considered fantastic researchers in, in the area of literacy. And now they're really struggling to defend their, their, what they did over the time that they were out. And so their books are not the issue. It's the way that they presented the information that we were supposed to be teaching to the children. So at this point, we were building our foundational knowledge. We were listening to these podcasts. We were learning through Letters. We went to the Amplifying Conference with Dr. French. Kelly and Angela were able to go up to Monroe to the dyslexia conference that was provided by our ISD. We started reading all sorts of books. And this is not even, this doesn't even begin to, you know, kind of encompass what's on my bookshelf at the moment. And I'm, I'm still going through many books in my piles like this. Speech to Print is kind of the college. Um, Speech to Print is kind of the college version of the Letters program. Um, students that are in colleges right now, if the college has embraced the new, um, structured literacy, this is kind of what they're presenting to the students. Um, in the bottom left, you can see the Miss- Michigan Dyslexia Handbook. Um, all teachers should have access to this. And this is what we should be putting in front of our teachers right now, because this is our state's view on what we should be doing for teaching dyslexia, um, students with dyslexia. Um, the knowledge gap, this is one that Dr. French read with us. Uh, we all kind of dove into this. And this is what kind of spurred us to start thinking. Because too often, high schools get blamed for not having kids that are achieving where they should be achieving. Like they, we get our kids to high school, why aren't they doing what they should be doing? Why don't they have this background knowledge? And it's always blamed on the high school or the high school teachers, when actually we should be looking back at more at our elementaries. Because what are our elementaries doing in order to support building that background knowledge before they get to the high school?
Julie, I believe was, was that a New York Times bestseller?
Yes, yes.
Natalie Recker's book, yeah.
Yes, it's wonderful. If you have a chance to read it, it's not a hard read. It's a fantastic book. Um, I have a, a daughter right now in A P World History and I'm looking at her and going, you know, there, there are concepts that, man, if I would have just talked with her a little bit more about them when she was younger, she'd be having an easier time right now. And so that's on me, you know? And I'm seeing what we can do in our schools that could have made her journey much easier right now. And then up here, we also have, um, just a fun one. There's a, a book up there called How Your Brain Learns to Read. Um, this actually puts the actual brain research, um, in the hands of the kids. And it uses terminology that the kids can, can grab onto and that they can start to understand that it's, it's not this magical process, but there's actually things happening in your brain that if something's not working for you, well, it's this part of your brain that we've got to focus on. And there are skills that we can teach you that can help you to access that part of your brain. Um, and so we were learning that we've got to give the kids the tools. They need the language. If you're teaching about a digraph, give them the word, digraph. My, uh, you know, the, the junior high kids will be like, that's a digraph? Talk about a digraph. What is that? And now they throw schwa at me. They're like, is it a schwa day? And I'm like, yes, it's a schwa day, you know? And if those are things, you're like, wait a second, what's that? We can talk.
So as we were doing, um, right click, okay. As we were doing all of this learning, uh, we were reading the books, listening to the podcasts, doing the Letters training, which is two-year training. It's, it's pretty intense. Um, and we're learning all of this. We had an aha moment when we were looking at this ladder of reading. So you can see this is the ladder of reading of how students learn to read. So at the top, it says about five percent of our students learn to reading, learning to read seems effortless. These are those kids that walk into kindergarten, they can already read, parents have no clue how they learned how to read. I had one of those, reading at three and a half. She just could read. Um, so that's five percent of our, our population. And then we looked at the next part, thirty-five percent, um, learn to read is relatively easy with broad instruction. So with that group of students, you know, if we use the balanced literacy, the three cueing system, if we use McGraw-Hill or Fontis and Pennell or the structured literacy, it really didn't matter. They would learn to read, um, whatever way we decided to present it. But that's only forty percent of our population. And we kind of looked at, you know, where do, what do we look like on M-stop, Fast Bridge, things like that. I, you know, not much better than that. Maybe we're hitting another twenty percent or so, twenty-five percent. So that next section of the forty to fifty percent, um, learning to read proficiently requires code-based, explicit, systematic, and sequential instruction. That is that structured literacy. That's what we learned about in Letters. Um, that's what we're going to talk about with our U Fly program that we're now using in kindergarten through second grade. Um, and then the ten to fifteen percent of our students, um, that are dyslexic, learning to read requires that code-based, explicit instruction and diagnostic instruction with many repetitions. Um, so they may need to see it, you know, two hundred times rather than seventy-five times. Um, so that's when we looked at this and we're like, ah, yeah. That's why we're not hitting this thirty percent, forty percent of students is because we're not doing this. We're not using structured literacy. We're using L L I, we're using Fontis and Pennell, all the things that we were taught. All the things, all of these teachers were taught. Um, that's what we learned in college. That's how they taught us to, to teach reading. But when we know better, we do better. So we needed to do something better for our students. So we looked, we took a closer look at Scarborough's Reading Rope. Um, and this is kind of all the parts of reading. Uh, you can see it says two thousand and one. This came out in two thousand and one, when the reading panel came out with what they thought we should be doing for reading in two thousand, and it was ignored, basically. So the top part, we have our language comprehension. That's that background knowledge, vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning, literacy knowledge. What's interesting is I was listening to the C T E students. I, I, I don't have the background knowledge. There's a lot of what they were saying, I was like, oh, I wonder what that is, you know? But then they used words like joint and I thought, well, I know what a joint is, so I'm sure it's something on that, you know, construction that maybe comes in. Um, so yes, that background knowledge. If you pick up a book on world history and you have no background knowledge on it, it's going to be awfully hard to read. You don't understand the vocabulary. You don't have, um, any knowledge on that or prior experiences. Um, and then there's the word recognition. That's what you probably know as phonics, right? The phonological awareness, the decoding, the sight recognition. So when we take the language comprehension and the word recognition and we put it together, that's how we get skilled reading. So word recognition, that portion, we solved by putting in place our U Fly, which is our phonics program and our Hegarty. And then last year, we did a pilot for the language comprehension portion with Wit and Wisdom, which is now what we are using. So, um, we're really trying to look at that rope and hit everything that we need.
I would just add, I shared this with the reading specialist. Headline today in Education Week says, Researchers Created a Phonics Program with Dramatic Results. Here's How It Works. And it is our U Fly phonics that we use in Bedford, many other districts as well. But, um, so excited that there, that are, that has been brought to us.
So after we did all this research, um, this was three years ago, so this has not been a quick process. Um, what we decided to do is we had Angela actually brought U Fly to us as well, because she had heard about it through her Letters training and everything. Um, because like I said, she was one year ahead of us in that program. And so she brought that to us. We looked at it. We thought it was amazing. We're like, okay, we're going to give this a try. And U Fly was intended to be used tier one, meeting with all the students. And so she was able to actually pilot it in a, um, a second grade classroom, um, tier one, as in with everyone. Um, but then what we did in, in kind of behind the scenes is we decided we would pilot it with our tier three students and our tier two students that were in our, um, in our intervention programs. So the kids that were working with our student intervention providers and then the students that were working with us as reading specialists. Um, at that same time, we, we kind of pulled out all the L L I materials. We put those aside. Um, we revamped them. If kids were going to use them, then we were using the structure that was provided for us through Letters. Um, we didn't want to get rid of the, all the books. That seemed a very irresponsible use of money that had been spent. The books are great. It's just, most of the books are great. We had to get rid of some of them. But, um, the books that were, the older kid books were great. They just needed to be used in a different way. Um, and then we went and we reassessed, or we looked at our assessments and we revamped them to make sure that they match science of reading expectations. Um, and what we did is we started to notice almost immediately. I mean, it was, it was a very quick turnaround that we saw that the students were achieving. And the kids were using the language like schwa and digraph. And they were going back to their classrooms and they were using these terms with their peers and with their teachers. And their teachers were coming down to us and saying, what are you teaching? They've brought this term into the classroom. Can you remind me what that even means? Um, and so the teachers were starting to, to get curious and they were saying, wait a second, they attacked this better than some of the kids in the, in the general classroom. And you can see on the phonemic awareness, that's what the graph is that's here. Um, this was, uh, Jack Monroe Kids First Grade. Um, you can see that this was the tier three children. Um, you can see what their scores were, um, in the, uh, wintertime compared to the spring. Um, their phonemic awareness results drastically improved. Um, and this was through using that U Fly, that systemic and, um, explicit instruction of that daily pro- program. And then it didn't just affect phonemic awareness. Um, this is also that same first grade group. You can see their winter versus their spring scores when it came to their oral fluency. Um, this would just be them being able to read, how many words can you read within a minute? And we had kids that were literal, almost literal non-readers, as in they could read the word A or I, um, in the winter. And then by spring, I had some of the students that were reading up to ninety words per minute. Um, and so drastic growth to go from kids that were feeling like they couldn't read, I don't like reading, what do you mean I have to read? Don't put that in front of me. That's too many words. To, what are we reading today? Ooh, give that to me. Hey, did you know that's a digraph? I can see that. They, they just lit up. Suddenly, reading became accessible, which was our goal.
And this is some of the data from that second grade pilot group. Uh, we did have a second grade classroom that was really struggling at the beginning of the year. They just happened to get the group with the beginning of the year data, like, that was struggling in reading. The rest of the second grade group did not look like this classrooms. And on top of it, there is a brand-new teacher in this classroom. So I was able to, uh, talk to that teacher and also get, um, the blessing from Mrs. Johnson to go into that classroom and co-teach with her and try out this U Fly, which she was very excited about. Um, so we co- co-taught that class, um, for all of that year. And we started with, looks like about eight or nine kids in that at-risk category and, um, a couple more in the some-risk category. And then by the end of the year, we only had one or two that were not meeting that benchmark. So the blue is the above and then green is low risk. So they really moved, um, a lot that year. By the end of the year, her data looked a lot like, if not better than the other second grade classrooms. So that was really exciting to see. So the next part was, okay, we know this is going really well in intervention. How do we get others on board? Uh, so we were using that U Fly, uh, with that one tier one group in the second grade and then also in all of our intervention groups. Um, so we just let the data speak. We showed the teachers, um, as well as those teachers coming in and saying, hey, you know, like, these kids that are in intervention are, you know, reading more fluently than, than the kids that aren't intervention. What's going on? Um, so we kind of looked at the data, teamwork. We needed more people on our team. So, you know, as these teachers are coming up, we're kind of talking to them about Letters, you know, this wonderful training, um, listen to this podcast, you might want to read this book. Do you want me to come in and do a lesson in your classroom? Would you like to visit the second grade classroom and see what they are doing? So just trying to get more teachers on board, because they were taught the same way we were. And this is something completely new. You're telling me everything I've been doing for five, fifteen, twenty-five years is wrong? Um, that's, that's a hard pill to swallow as a teacher. So we recruited teachers to take Letters. And we did get, I think, almost all of our kindergarten teachers in Bedford are, are Letters training now or in the process. Um, and then we have some first grade teachers and then couples spread out in different grade levels, as well as some of our special ed teachers now taking it.
I just had a junior high teacher sign up to take it.
And then Hegarty in kindergarten to take care of. Um, Hegarty is just a phonemic awareness program that's really quick. It's only ten minutes a day. So it was an easy one to slide into the kindergarten classrooms. Um, it's really simple for the teachers to do. So we thought, okay, oh, yeah. They're like, we can do ten minutes. Ten minutes is okay, a really easy program. So we were able to slide that in. Um, and then also in tier three, uh, first grade teachers were asking more about it. So they started using some of that phonemic awareness in their after-school tutoring groups. So as I said before, part of our job is to actually train teachers and I, we want to help the teachers. We want them to be the best that they can be. We developed flow charts for them so that they could actually, um, know what progression they needed to take, what steps to take, if they found an issue. So we use something called Fast Bridge for our assessments. Um, with that, there's a, there are screeners, A-reading and A-math are screeners. If a student flags in those areas, what we do is they dig deeper and they do another assessment to see if, you know, they might have had a bad day, they might have just been clicking. Some students like to do that. So they're young. Um, so we developed flow charts for them. So this flow chart is a decision-making flow chart and, oops, not hitting there. No, not working. Okay, so anyways, what we use are class records, teacher reports, M-step reports, our Fast Bridge early reading and A-reading. Early reading would be used in kindergarten, lower grades to dig deeper on letter sounds, onset and rhymes, things like that. Writing samples and spelling inventories. So spelling inventory is where we would give, it's, it's kind of like a spelling test, but we're not looking for the whole word. We're looking to see if they know rules and patterns that they need to use within a word. Is it in the middle of the word, beginning of the word, end of the word? And they get credit for using that part only, not necessarily the whole word. So if their performance level is on, on target, then what they would do is tier one, which would be in the classroom. And that is your whole group, the teachers teaching it, basic, um, your U Fly in the classroom or other lessons. Um, if they're not on target, then we would dig deeper with C B M R, which, um, checks their fluency and their percentage of words correctly within a minute. And we would analyze any spelling errors that would, they would have. If they're still struggling, we use something called Com-ficiency, which actually asks, um, we feel like it's better comprehension questions to see where the breakdown actually is. After doing, um, the C B M R and the Com-ficiency, we have to determine if they're accurate or not. If they are, we check their fluency prereq skills, make sure that they have them. And, um, we use things to help focus on fluency building while they're working. Phrases, um, text, if you're, if you're working with phrases, it's not necessarily a sentence. It could just be a few words like the dog is, if, for a younger kid, something like that. It's not the whole sentence. If they are not accurate, we go back and we do a Letters phonics, um, word reading survey, which is, um, another assessment to see where the breakdown actually is. We administer another test that does basically the same thing called the past. Um, we teach word recognition, accuracy, and fluency. And then, um, are teaching, if, are we teaching the appropriate phonological skills? Um, do they need an early skill, a basic skill, or an advanced skill? Um, one student, um, that I'm working with right now was actually tested for special ed and did not qualify. He now can tell me if I'm talking about the Floss Rule. Oh yeah, that comes after a short vowel, after a short vowel. If I hear that sound after a short vowel, I write two L's. So they are remembering the skills and it's actually working. Another chart we have is, um, the language comprehension chart. So we checked to see if their comprehension is at level. We talked about, I talked about the, um, Com-ficiency. This would be an area like that. We use the C B M R to check, and Com-ficiency to check accuracy. We check to see if they're at level. If they're at level, we still stick with tier one. They're still getting the instruction in the classroom no matter what. It doesn't mean they're done. If there's an error, you go to tier two, which would be they're still getting tier one in the classroom, the teacher's pulling them for small group, and we are pulling them out. If it's a tier three, they get extra support on top of all of that. So the things that we focus on for, on vocabulary and comprehension, oral written language, their written expression, the vocabulary, their use of strategies for self-monitoring, Do they just keep reading if they make a mistake? And familiarity with the, with the genres. We go back to that background knowledge. So are they familiar with the genres that they're using or the topics that they have? We look at sentence comprehension, topic knowledge with the background information and higher level reasoning and ability. With the background information, there was a study that was done. It was called the baseball study. So that study took high readers and low readers. They all took a test on baseball. The low readers had background knowledge on baseball. The high readers did not have background knowledge. The low readers actually scored higher on the test than the higher readers because they had the background knowledge.
So while all this was going on, this is now two years ago, we worked with Dr. French to look at four different products that we could look into as a possible curriculum purchase for the district. The first thing we did is we visited Wonders, which was the curriculum that we currently had. And we found that they had altered just a few things and didn't actually match up with the new research behind the science of reading, so we kind of crossed them off pretty quickly. We looked into EL, oh, I can't remember exactly what they're called, EL.
EL.
Just EL. And they, actually, they were a product where you'd have to print everything off. And we were thinking, we didn't want to actually get into that whole mess of having to print every single thing for everything we were doing. So then that brought us to Wit and Wisdom and CKLA. And we, we actually had volunteers across the district in all grade levels that decided that they would work on piloting those two programs. And while the piloting was going on, we decided that we would put Ufly into all kindergarten through second classrooms in the district. Jackman actually had third grade teachers who actually implemented it in the third grade classrooms as well that year. And so the year went on. We took teacher feedback throughout the whole year. We had discussions throughout the whole year. And at the end of the year, we had a great conversation. We looked at the data from the year. And it was kind of decided, after looking at everything, that Wit and Wisdom would fit the district the best. And so that's when Dr. French, I'm sure, came back and presented to you that we needed to take a serious look at adopting Wit and Wisdom, which is what we did. And so then, at the end of last year, we provided all the teachers with the materials so that if they wanted to look at them over the summer, they could. Training was provided at the beginning of this year for teachers to begin implementation. And so now all K-five teachers are doing Wit and Wisdom in the classrooms. And we have Geodes as a support in K-two classrooms. Those are decodable books, which have controlled text in them so that the kids can apply the things they're learning in their lessons directly into the text. Ufly is continuing in K-two classrooms and Hegarty is continuing in K-one classrooms. Obviously, we've extended services into the junior high. With me moving into the junior high, been able to bring services into that building as well. And we've started the cycle there again. So I've started working with Mr. Hurley and Mr. Fr, or Dr. French in aligning the assessments. We've kind of been taking a look at that very closely. Small little bits of PD throughout the year, one-on-one or in small groups of, of teachers. And then we are also just kind of in conversations about a, a knowledge-building curriculum pilot there. So lots of conversations still going on there. We haven't quite decided where that's going to go next.
And now the exciting piece, just some of the data. This is the data that I showed about that second grade pilot group. We just wanted to look at where they are now. And you can see they maintained where they left off in second, second grade. So they are doing well. And then this is just Douglas Road Elementary's data, but it's our I-Rips, the individual reading improvement plans that every student needs that is below grade level in reading. Fall of twenty-two, twenty-three, before we implemented any of this, for first through third grade at Douglas Road, we had eighty I-Rips. And at that point, we were using a cut score of fifteen percent, if they were below the fifteenth percentile, national percentile. They, we had to write an I-RIP saying what we were going to do to get them to where they needed to be. Fall of twenty-three, twenty-four, after just doing some of that, that Hegarty in the kindergarten classrooms, as well as the interventions, switching to Ufly, then we were at about sixty-five, sixty-eight, right around there for first through third grade. Last year is when we implemented Ufly in all of K-two. And at the beginning of this year, we had just over forty. And in the first grade, it was only, we started with only twelve this year. For usually first grade, that's the big year. Usually, the last two years, we had between thirty-five and forty kids that needed an I-RIP. And the first grade teachers are like blown away. They don't even know what to do. They're like, oh, my gosh, they can read. They're coming in reading. They have all of these skills, the spelling, everything is going great. So having, at least in that first grade, thinking of that, that those ten kids that are currently on an individual reading improvement plan, that makes sense. That's about that dyslexia range, that ten to fifteen percent that we looked at earlier or, you know, a learning disability, right around there. And then this is, Dr. French had presented this data, I think, earlier in the year. It was in one of the newsletters, just seeing where we've come.
We looked at data from the baseline before COVID and then how are our students, elementary students, performing the last, last few years? So, so quite, quite an increase. This is the growth, happens to be the growth percentile. And, and we're quite happy with, with the progress.
And then just, oh, some quotes from parents and students and teachers. Things that they're happy with.
So our next steps, obviously, we need to continue to support teachers through the first years of the new ELA curriculum shift. It often is said in, in any educational setting that it takes at least three years for a teacher to get used to a new curriculum. So obviously, these first three years are, are key in helping to make sure that the shift is done correctly. And then also, as new staff members come into the district, we need to remember that they are new to the program. We need to give them the same courtesy that, that our teachers got as they came in for training. And then we want to make sure that we continue to stay informed regarding the newest research. So as the, you know, science is doing amazing things. We're learning more about the brain every single day. They're learning more about reading research every single day. We need to stay on top of that and adapt to it as we learn more. And then continue to support the changes in the junior high, because as this position is new, we're, we're adapting there, too. We're learning and adapting there as I settle in. And we're, we're just working to, to make things good over there, too, when it comes to having the support in that building as well. And so that brings us to the end. I know we talked way longer than expected. Like I said, ninety minutes crushed down is, is pretty hard. So are there any questions that anyone would like to ask?
I don't have a question, but I would like to just recognize all of you and I wish Anita was here, because my, I have a first grader struggles with reading. He's worked with her. And now that I've seen this presentation, I kind of understand the process more. So that's helpful for me. I've heard nothing but praise for the Ufly at parent-teacher conferences. It seems to be doing really well. And I'm glad that we're moving into the junior high, because these pandemic kids who are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they're into junior high now. And we need, and my daughter was a second grader back then. She's a seventh grader now. And we need to stick with these kids who kind of got left behind a little bit, because they were at home and not getting the full experience. And so that's, I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations on all the hard work. You can clearly see it in the testing studies and everything. And I know it's a lot to implement a whole new curriculum. And like you said, three years it takes to understand and be able to implement it. I do love also that we're moving up to the junior high. And I know you're starting from the ground there. I would love to see this expand to the high school also, because I know we have students that are needing help there as well. But I know you've got a lot of work cut out for you. And I just want to say, I really appreciate what you guys and Mark French have done. This is a huge step up for our district. Thank you, guys.
I'll just add to thank you for your leadership. And, and one of the things that I love about it, you know, you talked about, this is not the way you were taught, this, and not the way you've been teaching. But this says it right here, educating for life. So it's not just that we're educating our kids. Your willingness and the willingness on the part of the teachers in the buildings who are willing to learn something new. And it's not easy. And they're going to, you know, they're going to be on that learning curve, like you said, for three years. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate, you know, you sharing what we're doing in, with others in the state, because that gives people an insight into Bedford Public Schools. And, you know, we're on the cutting edge and, Mark, thank you for your leadership. And it's, it's exciting. I know when Carl goes to conferences, when I go to conferences, it's very clear that we're in a great place in Bedford. And it's because of the leadership that we have in so many different places in the district. So, thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on, on Amy's thoughts. So, back on September, October tenth of last year, the governor signed two bills into law, SB, which is Senate Bill five-six-seven and five-six-eight. And there were multiple components to this. They were, they were coined as the dyslexia and literacy bills. So the, the main components of the bills are that K through three students, starting in two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, will be screened three times per year for dyslexia. They are working on those screener tools now. They also, it requires multi-tier systems of support utilization across the district. K-12 reading specialists or reading specialists for literacy. It also has a component for selecting a science of reading instructional material component. So if you look down this list, Bedford has already checked off each of these except for the one tool that has not yet been created. So it's almost like they took what Mark and you ladies have been working on, working on over the last three years and set its best practice. Let's go move forward and sign it as a bill. So the rest of the districts across the state will be using the same tools that we've started to use and have already had a two-year head start now. So, thank you, Mark, and thank you, ladies, for all the hard work and the detailed information.
Thank you. I, I was hoping that you would be very excited and proud that these ladies are helping lead these efforts in our district. We're, we're very blessed. And we're so proud of your work and Anita as well, as just, I think she's really loving what she's doing. From what she's expressed. So we're very excited to have their leadership. I just found out, ladies, and I hope, I hope you might take this invitation. They've been invited to a symposium to present, kind of a statewide thing, but it's presented by Great Minds, which produces our wit and wisdom. But Great Minds was very proud of our implementation process and how we, how we came about to choosing it. So, so it would be a chance to share more about that. So excited about all those things, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to personnel items for tonight.
Thank you. I have, I have one. It's a big one. Let me find my spot here. We have consideration to approve the retirement of our longtime athletic director, Mr. Mark Garman, who has been with the district since nineteen eighty-eight. He will have over thirty-seven years of service to Bedford Public Schools when he retires. This is, he did notify us early. This, this is something that he's been communicating for a long time with Carl and I. And we knew this was coming. So he did want to make that early enough. So we have already implemented a survey, a stakeholder survey at the high school. So between Dr. Schultz, Kevin Weber, our principal at the high school, and I are working together to utilize that survey data to make sure that the posting reflects what our stakeholders want and need from this position. So, and then prior to, to Mr. Garman, we had a longtime athletic director. So our district has had two athletic directors in like the last probably, what, half-century or something like that? So, so this is a big position. It's a, it's a reflection of our community and our district. And it's one we're going to take very seriously as we do with all, all positions. So, so the plan is to, obviously, to, this is the start. And we, we will be recognizing Mr. Garman for his long service to Bedford schools. Often, I'm sure, between now and June thirtieth. But the plan is, is to, to start here and recognize his, his announcement. And then we'll post the job upon approval of, of his resignation or retirement. Next week is the plan to post the position. And then we will, we, I expect that we will attract the, the best candidate possible for this big position. Figuratively, literally a six-foot-eight, size fifteen, sixteen, I'm sure, guy. So literally some big shoes to fill, so.
You just stole my joke.
It's all of our job, right?
All right, I will entertain a motion reluctantly.
Adam President.
Todd.
I move that the Board of Education approve the retirement of Mark Garman, Athletic Director, as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Just that he's. Yeah, I, I'm not recommending that you guys approve this one. I'll just put it simply, and you guys know my, my fondness for Mark. This is one of the hardest jobs, not only in education, anywhere. You are expected to be everywhere, to be everything, to everyone. You are the, you are the listening stone when anyone doesn't make the team or makes the team and is going on to college and needs help. Mark, there's no better ambassador for Bedford Public Schools than Mark. He's across the state. And no one will be happy with all decisions anyone makes. But I can tell you, as an athletic director goes, many people like his decisions more than some of my other athletic directors. So it'll be a tough job to fill. We are going to look at tweaking it just a bit with some of the responsibilities that Mark has besides the athletic director position right now. So we'll tailor a position that, for somebody that we think we can attract. As junior highs become more and more involved in competitive athletics and we add more and more teams, it's what we've had, what we've done here. It's probably going to be a little less of the high school administration piece and working with Kevin on that. But this is a big role and we'll find somebody. And we'll find somebody good, because Bedford typically attracts very good people. But it is a, it is a tough pill to swallow, because so many things are going well. On the facilities front, as well as our teams are winning across the board. And if they're not winning, they're always representing us, you know, to the best of their ability. So I, I don't care if we ever, if we never win another championship, as long as our kids are safe, have fun and feel supported. And, you know, the fact that we do that, plus win.
Nice thing.
If you proud.
I happened to see him just before I came over here. And I told him that I was going to have our time with this vote tonight. But he assured me that there was really nothing we could do about it. So, anyway, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. You don't get a vote, Tom. All right, we've reached our second public commentary. Seeing no public that hasn't already spoken, we'll move on to announcements and comments. Are one of you filling the role of administrator tonight, or are we not doing that?
Jackie is.
Jackie is, all right.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Maybe we're long-winded, so I apologize. Usually, they have nothing to say, and tonight, they have a lot to say. It says hello at Monroe Road. We have finished our testing season and are holding data meetings to determine tiered interventions. Spring after-school tutoring session has started. Mid-year bounce house reward from the PTO was a blast. Fourth grade classes are going to Lansing next Wednesday. PBIS assembly is next week. We will be doing the Masked Singer, drawing names for students to play Plinko from mule bucks they earned throughout the quarter and reviewing what it means to be our best Bedford. Our new social worker, Mrs. Brubaker, and new student support coordinator, Mrs. Yocum, have teamed up with Ms. Mackey to lead Reaching Higher, a leadership program for the fifth graders. The student council is holding a one-dollar PJ day tomorrow to raise money in order to create a Valentine's basket for the Bedford Senior Center. And then Jack Monroe. The winter after-school session is in full swing with forty-four students meeting every Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday until March twentieth. Fifth grade is preparing for Camp Michindo. That'll be March tenth through the fourteenth. Student council is doing a disaster relief fundraiser by hosting a theme day. Third grade classes are hosting a stray hearts fundraiser in support of Monroe County Humane Society by hosting a hat day. Twenty-five fifth grade students are participating in the Reaching Higher program. It's going very well. Winter assessments are wrapping up. Students have made significant growth. Thirty students were released from individual reading improvement plans. We are appreciating having Deputy Hissy and Deputy, is our necky, maybe, join deputy bills at the elementary schools. JRE continues to hold monthly building safety meetings with Mr. Scott Beard from the ACAP. Valentine's Day parties are on February fourteenth from nine to ten. Yearbooks are currently on sale until April eighteenth. We're preparing for the spring M-step and we're having an amazing third quarter. And then the high school, we recently honored five students who participated in our winter signing day. Congratulations to Jace Blumer. He will play baseball at Lord's. Andrew Kubler, he will play baseball at Terra State Community College. Drew Longston will play football for Ohio Northern. Jackson Nedlec will play tennis for Adrian College. And Aiden Ortiz will do cross-country and track for Taylor University. The high school's also scheduling. Leslie Matterny says scheduling's underway. And Rodrick Hurley said, also they're in the middle of scheduling. And they have completed their mid-year IXL diagnostic. And the team will be looking at the data. And that is it. That is a lot.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the executive cabinet. Chrissy?
Just to remind everyone that W2s have been published. They're on the Employee Access Center. If you need help printing or getting access to your account, you can contact the business office. And I'm working on. And I'm working on budget adjustments that I believe we're going to try to present at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's.
Just want to thank the CTE and our programs for the presentations tonight and our reading specialists. There's so many great things going on in Bedford Public Schools, and it's just so nice to hear everyone's story. We had an opportunity this week, we'll finish up handing out the Above and Beyond Awards for the second quarter. Just, that's probably the best part of my job, it feels so good to spread that joy to other people that are so deserving within the district. So, we'll wrap that up, and we'll push out some emails and social media posts over the next week celebrating them. And HR, we're already thinking about next year, as we've already acknowledged a retirement. We, at the end of the month, will meet with principals to start beginning that staffing process for the 2025, '26 school year already. So, those are all the things happening in HR.
Thank you. Dr. French?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much, all of you, for being here tonight. We just couldn't be prouder of all the work you're doing with all our students. Shout out to all of our principals, this is Principals Week by Declaration of the Board, so, and that helps prepare beautiful boxes of treats for them, and I get to finish distributing those tomorrow. We've had a couple delays this week in getting them all out, but they will all get there. And we also, we take time to honor our directors as well, so, directors of our different departments, and we're honoring our school resource officers as well. So, we'll have pictures of them, and Mr. Sanderson will help get those nice pictures out of honoring them this week. Just to give you an idea of the curriculum context of what the ladies presented tonight, it's in the context of, we started with mathematics at the elementary level first. So, we formed professional learning teams around mathematics. We've been working with our consultant, Shannon McCartney, and her team of coaches. So, they've completely redone also their mathematics curriculum over the past several years. They were further along with that, and then layered in the changes that the ladies mentioned tonight. So, brought the rigor back to both areas. So, the junior high commented this year about math, like this sixth-grade class, something's been going on. So, they're going to start seeing the same thing with reading as the effect of the changes reach in the next few years. So, we're excited about that. The ISD is supporting districts as they look at how to utilize generative AI. So, they've put together a professional learning series on that. We're sending a team of myself, our technology director, Mrs. Earl, Mr. Weber, and Mrs. Klein, and we're going to take part in a couple full professional learning days, and they're providing some coaching support for districts to really, not just us, but districts want to learn more about it and how do we really harness this to the best, not, you know, not for the others. So, that's, we're looking forward to that coming up soon. And in addition to the symposium I mentioned, there's a potential invitation for me to present at our State and Federal Programs Conference for the state in April about our PLC journey. So, it's Bedford's journey to become a professional learning community and what that involves. So, excited about that, I'll tell you more about that if and when that invitation comes. But, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, hopefully, we won't have any delays tomorrow because we put down lots of salt this morning. One of the touch base, Michigan's Filter First program that is going on, that we have met the first deadline for having our drinking water management plans in place, you can find those online underneath the Facilities Department, but we are not required to turn those into anybody or post those, only make those available if people ask for them. What they do is that we went through and identified every drinking source in the district, which is about 430-some sources of where we get our water from, fixtures, and had to identify which of those fixtures are going to be consumable and non-consumable. And then, we will apply filters to the ones that will be consumable, and we'll apply stickers to the ones that say, "For non-consumable hand washing only." That part of the, the next stage would be to have all of that planned in place, which needs to be done by the end of the '25, '26 school year. Our school radar signs, radar signs are in the warehouse. We received those the last couple of days. Soon as the weather breaks, we will try to start getting those installed. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Just thank you again to the presenters for this, for today, and thank you to the Board for supporting our initiatives this evening. Weather-related, looks like the freezing rain is gone. I know some neighborhoods are still needing to thaw out, but most of the main roads are in really good shape. So, I would expect, unless something dramatic happens, that we will be in session tomorrow. Tom, thanks for the salt. We've been saving up, it's been a nice winter, we've been doing all right. But yes, other than that, just thank you, everybody. And Tom mentioned the radar signs, he's also, he forgot to mention that we wrapped up our, he finalized the plans and the redesign for the classroom numbers and office numbers for these new school zones, the new school interior signs that we approved some time back. This is, this is a lot of work, 700 signs, I think, across the district. So, it's a lot of, it's a lot of walking around and making sure every nook and cranny has a sign on it, and those are the ones that are attempted, that go above the doors for the safety purposes. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to board comments. Cole?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Garman on his retirement. It was always a pleasure getting to see my athletic director behind my block every single time, you know, we would go on to meets and do things. He's always been an amazing athletic director, and I wish him the best in his career choices past, you know, in retirement. I'd also like to say congratulations to Dr. French and to also the reading specialists. Congratulations to everything that y'all are doing, it's very amazing, it makes me very proud to be a Bedford graduate. And I'd also like to say thank you to the CTE programs back there in the back, y'all are doing an excellent job as well. Thank you for everything that you do for our students. Thank you.
Tom?
I also want to thank the readers and the special assistants for the children. CTE, big part of the, of learning for the children. You guys obviously do a great job. That's all I got, thanks.
Griffin?
Yeah, Jackie, you know I love you. Yeah, I appreciate you and Don coming in. I've told this story before, but way back when I first joined the board, Don came in with some of his students, and they presented, just like they did today. And then, they went in the back of the room and had a group hug, you know, and these kids really love these programs, and every year, they get bigger and bigger and bigger, and it's a great thing. I'd also like to thank you guys again, and Anita as well, for all the work you guys do, and the SIPs. I think the SIPs kind of don't get a lot of the glory, recognition, but they do a lot of work directly with the kids, helping them out. The Trends Survey, I just wanted to mention the safety part of it, I mean, that's really important, and I think we seem to do well with that. I remember years ago, we had another similar survey, and like 88% of all the students that responded said that they felt safe. I mean, that was way before we even did the bond with Safe Enterses and all the other stuff that we've done. I like seeing the new deputies, I've seen them out in the blue line in the morning, so glad to have them. The restrooms are always an issue. Hopefully, we can get that nailed down. And the bus safety thing at Jackman Road, my mom was the driver who taught those classes. She's been one of our drivers for almost 30 years, and she loves any chance she gets to work with kids and teach and do that thing, so, all good stuff. Thank you.
Amy?
I just want to say congratulations to everybody, our reading specialists, Mark, CTE programs. The growth on every level in the district, it seems, is amazing. It doesn't matter if it's CTE, our reading, our math, I mean, how many employees we don't have to look for right now. You guys are just doing a great job, and I'm proud to be on your board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add that it's been a long meeting, but what a good meeting. The last time that I filled in for Lisa, I think it was a 20-minute meeting, so this was a little bit longer than that, but we did okay. But yeah, I'll sit through a two-hour meeting anytime when it's just good news after good news and getting to see the kids and the results of everything we're doing. I was laughing about, though, I'm looking at these beautiful keychains, and the lessons that you don't, aren't in any curriculum, aren't in any textbook, but, you know, performing under pressure when you get a deadline, that you need something in 12 days, and then, you know, not being able to go to work for three of those days, you know, and having to figure out how you're still going to get the, meet the deadline. Those are things they don't write into the, into the curriculum. So, anyway, thank you, everyone, and with that, I'll wish you all a good night and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, motion to adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
We are.